I'd like to call the meeting, this meeting to order the Planning Commission for July 13th, 2023. And to start right off the bat, any of you here for the Peterson rezone, that agenda item is going to be canceled. There was an error in the advertising of it, so it'll be re-advertized and it'll be heard at our next meeting on the 27th. So I'd like to welcome everyone out. It's good to see you out tonight. I will offer a word of prayer, and then if you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful that we could meet here tonight. We're grateful for all our many blessings and for the opportunity we have to live in this free land. We're grateful for this peaceful, beautiful valley and for the residents that live here that make it such an enjoyable place to live. We ask at this time that Thou might bless us that as we are making decisions that will affect the residents of this county, that we might have a clear mind, that we might have wisdom in our thoughts and in our decisions. And again, we thank Thee for all that we have, and we say these things in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Okay, next on the agenda, agenda's the approval. Do I have a motion to approve it with the cancellation of item number 10?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Member Bass and a second by Member Little. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item is Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. Anyone have conflict of interest with any item on the agenda tonight? Seen none? We'll move on. Public comment time. Now's the time for the public to offer their comments. Item 6, 7, and 8 are administrative, so we will not have a public hearing. So if you wish to comment on item 6, 7, or 8, now would be your time. Item number 9 will have its own public hearing, so we would request that you hold your comments till that time to speak. So at this time, we'll open it up to public comment.
I'll take a quick second. Jane Zieber, Economic Development, Morgan County. So first, I just want to say thank you for all the time and effort and energy you guys put into planning. Part of a lot of hours spent at home behind the computer going over everything, so you're prepared for this meeting. So number one, thank you. We're doing a lot of work from a mechanic perspective on different areas and kind of maybe some old areas that have the new areas presently, like the, you know, the PADs. We'll bring, we'll start bringing some things within the CRAs or RDAs, which are the tip components of economic development forward for you to start to look at as the CRA or the RDA committee starts bringing those in front of the commission. And then there's a lot of things that are kind of right around the corner as some of the development is looking to start happening at the other, at the west, at westish end of the county with the Mountain Green, some of the growth that will happen out there. So again, a lot of things are coming down the pike, add to all the things already that Josh is working on. We just ask for your patience as we kind of put some of these things together because they're new and we're building them from the ground up and hope that you enjoy the ride as all these things start to kind of come together. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments this time? Okay, we will move on. So item number 6, Rome Commercial Flex Space Unit Site Plan.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Item number 6 on tonight's agenda is for application number 23.027. This is CW Land Co. requesting site plan approval for the Rome Commercial Flex Space Site Plan and is identified by the parcel numbers and serial numbers located in your staff report and is generally located north and east of the intersection of West Old Highway Road and Queens Garden Road in Mountain Green. Staff has reviewed this project and finds that it meets all minimum code requirements as well as meeting the requirements for a site plan for lighting, parking, and landscaping standards. There are no fire or engineer comments at this time. Staff is recommending approval for the site plan, and I along with Josh can answer any questions you may have. And the applicant is in the audience tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I don't have any.
No other question? My only question was on the elevation in materials used. It requires the majority of each facade, 51% or more, the wall space excluding windows, doors shall be constructed to follow in hard surfaces and mentions them. Remember, we had a discussion about stucco with the townhomes and the percentage of stucco.
Thank you all for your time tonight. McKenna Christensen, applicant with CW Land. So with these flex units, we are only using stucco on our back facade, and that only constitutes
Any questions, other questions for the applicant?
Could you just kind of show me if there's any landscaping? I could have a hard time reading exactly whether there may be some landscaping.
Yeah, so you can see we have landscape all along the back of the building of the native seed mix back there. And then we do have landscaping on the north and south end of the property as well as in the park strips. We, and we are not counting the landscape and the right-of-way towards our landscape percentages as well as some planar boxes and between the driveways.
If I remember correctly, the landscaping on the site exceeds 15%. We talked about adding a couple extra trees. And then if you add in the landscaping in the right-of-way, it exceeded 20% overall, but we weren't counting the total.
Any other questions or concerns?
Was there any lighting, like parking lights?
Yeah, I reviewed the lighting plan with the county engineer.
Okay.
It meets our minimum requirement.
Okay, there's no more questions?
Sorry, can I ask one more question? I noticed there's only one handicap parking, but there's 14 units. I don't know, how's, how's that work there, Josh?
So handicap spaces are calculated based on the total number. I believe you need one handicap space for the first 25 parking spaces.
So this is all considered as one?
So each, each unit will have at least one parking space interior to it. They'll have a garage space, and then there's 14 spaces on the total site.
Okay.
Why wouldn't the handicap space be in the middle?
We can look into that. We were having some grading issues with this site, but we can look into moving it into the middle of the site to make it more accessible.
There's also addition, additional width requirements for handicap. So the first space has to be a van accessible, which typically means you have your regular space plus an aisle, I believe, on the right side, and it has to be 11 feet in width, something like that. So, so the first handicap space, it is larger in nature just because it has to be van accessible.
So it's meeting the requirements?
So if given circulation patterns, typically you want those closer to the entry points anyway. So I mean, I believe it meets minimum. When the site goes to final construction drawings with the county engineer as well as billing permits, the billing official also needs to come along.
Couldn't you show us that picture of the elevation again?
You can zoom out if you need to.
We want to see the, what it looks like.
I think that's pretty easy, but you probably have to zoom out.
I guess I'm kind of confused why there's garage doors on all of them.
Because these are commercial spaces, garage doors. They could be used for workshops, they could be used for festivities, they could be used for annual commercial, and then for this. So there's nothing that prohibits the garages to be there?
Yeah, our intent is really to provide flexibility for business owners, whether they need a garage door for loading and unloading, whether they want to purchase one of these to create an office out of and be able to park inside their office. We really just want to create flexibility for them, which a garage door is pretty typical among other flex units. These ones, we're planning on making these a little more elevated than the typical tilt-up concrete flex unit, but the garage door is pretty typical.
It just seems like it would look pretty, like extra commercially next to all the houses, like as you're headed in. But if it meets the thing, I guess it meets the thing.
So the town center requirements as far as permitted and conditional uses for business would govern what business could go in there?
Yep. We have the land use list, they'll have to comply. So any business that wants to go in there would have to come in with a business license, and at that time, we'll check those out.
And these are the ones that they actually buy that space? They're not renting it?
Is it going to be condominium?
Like the ones over by the airport?
Yeah, we have our plat next on the agenda and condominiums. So we would plan on selling these to individual business owners who would like to own their own building. Any further questions?
Okay, thank you. Ready for motion then?
Madam Chair, I move we recommend approval to the County Commission for the Rome Commercial Flex Space Unit Site Plan, application 23.027, allowing for the proposed commercial development located at 4950 West Old Highway Road in the incorporated Morgan County, based on the findings and what the conditions listed in the staff report.
We have a motion by Member Bass. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Member Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item number 7. This is the Rome Commercial Plat Flex Space Units for preliminary and final, correct?
Same project, the same application.
Well, let's get, make sure it is final too. It says preliminary and final.
And so item number 7 is for application number 23.020. So this is the preliminary plat for the site plan that we just heard. For the Rome Commercial Flex Space Units, preliminary plat, which would create 14 commercial flex space condominiums, and is identified by the parcel numbers and serial numbers listed in your staff report, and is generally located northeast of the intersection of West Old, Old Highway Road and Queens Garden Road in Mountain Green. Staff has reviewed this project and fights, finds that it meets all minimum code requirements for preliminary plat. There are no fire or engineer comments. Staff is recommending approval, and I along with Josh can answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is again in the audience. Thank you.
So this is preliminary and final?
Preliminary and final.
Because nowhere does it say "and final."
Yeah, just preliminary. So it's just preliminary?
It's just preliminary because there's more than 10.
Any questions for staff? No.
I don't have none.
Any questions for the applicant?
So to make it, actually, I have a question for staff. To, to make it so they can sell each individual lot, that's why they're doing the subdivision?
Yeah, so.
Well, not each individual lot, but each individual building space unit.
Correct. So the condominium plat is what has to happen in order to create convertible or sellable lots. In this case, the portion of the building. Everything outside of the building, including the walls, will be held in common by the owners of the condominiums and maintained.
Like an HOA?
So I just had a weird question, I guess. It said on the property layout, it says there's five total lots on page three.
That, that for some reason is a carryover from the Rome Commercial across the street.
Oh.
And I'm not sure how it made it into this part before.
I was going to say, that may cause some confusion trying to sell them.
I'll make sure that's deleted before we move on.
Any other questions or concerns?
I don't have anything.
Ready for motion then?
I'll make a motion. I move we recommend approval of the Rome Commercial Flex Space Unit Preliminary Plat to the County Commission, application number 23.020 for 14 commercial flex space condominiums located at northeast corner of Old Highway Road and Queens Garden Road in unincorporated Morgan County, based on the findings with conditions listed in the staff report. Were there conditions?
Yeah, there was some conditions.
Okay. Delayed, dated July 13th, 2023.
Okay, I have a motion by Member Little. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And second by Member Wilson. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 8, this is the Cottonwoods Meadow Park East Phase 5A-5. And this will be preliminary and final.
Because it's less than 10?
Yeah, it's 5. Yeah.
Okay.
This is for application number 22.024, preliminary and final plat. I request for preliminary and final plat approval for a proposed small subdivision of five lots consisting of 1.74 acres in the area known as the Meadow Park East part of the Cottonwoods. It's a master planned sub-phase within Phase 5 of the Cottonwoods for the Mountain Green Development Agreement. Generally located along the east side of Park Meadow Drive, between Silverleaf, Silverleaf Drive on the north and Harvard Drive on the south within Mountain Green. Staff has reviewed this project and finds that it meets all minimum code requirements. There are no fire comments. There were some engineer comments, minor in nature, and are being addressed currently by the applicant and will be addressed before, prior to recordation. Staff is recommending approval, and Josh and I can answer any questions you may have.
What were those comments?
The comments are about, due to the harsh winter, there are some repairs needed to Park Meadow Drive itself, and I believe there's, there's work being done on those now. The other was about a grading plan after the geotechnical report. And actually, the geotechnical, the organization that wrote that report also issued a letter confirming compliance for the grading plan. And so I think those just changes have to be made, that they're going to be compliant, so.
Any other questions?
What's the rest of that blue line on page 10?
I believe it's incorrect. I believe I missed marking the part. So it is just five lots right next to each other, and they're right along Park Meadow Drive. Those ones pictured there.
Well, but what is the blue line for?
It, it was meant to highlight those. I, I didn't highlight it correctly. I highlighted basically the space around it, which is the rest of the lot, but it's just these five lots for the, for the small subdivision.
So yeah, so Phase 5A is going to be two phases. This is Phase A, if I remember correctly, Phase 1, and then Phase 2, and the remaining portion of the lot.
Oh.
But that is an error.
Just out of curiosity, why are they splitting it into two when there's only five at a time?
The applicant's leaving it for five.
You can ask. Skylar, can you come up?
Good evening. My name is Skylar Gardner, and I'm the representative for Cottonwood 勘测. The reason why there's only five lots is because Park Meadow Drive was included and all of the improvements in Park Meadow Drive were included in a previous condominium subdivision. And we didn't want to mix the condominium subdivision west of Park Meadow Drive with the traditional single-family lots that are going to be east of Park Meadow Drive. So that road exists, so we're bringing it back with just these five lots. And then the next application you, you will see, excuse me, is, it's kind of highlighted there, that lightly dotted cul-de-sac immediately east of these five lots is where you'll see a second application. But we just wanted to move forward these five lots because all of the infrastructure is already in place in the road in front of them. So all we're proposing is some minor grading to eliminate an old ditch that ran through these properties with our grading plan that was described earlier.
Other questions? I noticed one, one of the signature blocks, since we're the land use authority, it, it said county council, which is now county commission, but I don't believe they will sign off, can be.
No, that will be directed as part of our final review of the final plat.
Any more concerns or questions? If not, ready for motion?
I can do it.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion. We move to approve the Meadow Park East Cottonwoods Phase 5A-5, small subdivision preliminary and final plat, application number 23.024, allowing for a five lot subdivision of land located approximately 4,000 north. I think it's this, the wrong one, or?
No, that's wrong.
Did I read that part, that location there?
Okay. Location is 6160 Park Meadow Drive, Mountain Green, based on the findings and the conditions listed in the staff report dated July 13th, 2023.
Okay, I have a motion by Member Wilson. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Member Bass. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Enjoy listening to anybody else?
Yeah. Okay, next item is number nine. This is a legislative item, Rural Street Standard Text Amendment.
About a month and a half, two months ago, we received an application to amend our zoning ordinance as well as to add a section into the subdivision regulation that would add an additional option for large lots, single-family subdivisions, specifically a rural street standard. Staff met with the applicant, discussed where to put the proposed text amendment, and modified the proposal. We met with the applicant with Brett Heiner, Public Works Director, as well as Mark Miller, County Engineer. And both Brett Heiner and Mark Miller were in favor of adding a rural street standard for lots that were one acre in size or greater. Basically, it removes the requirement for curb, gutter, and sidewalk, and instead widens the paved portion of the road to include two six-foot bicycle pedestrian lanes on both sides, which would act as shoulders as well. The, the ditches are, have a maximum slope of a three to one with a two-foot max depth. At driveways, the driveways across would need to be paved along with concrete, precast concrete.
Culverts?
Thank you. I was, it's been a long day. Culverts. After talking with Brett Heiner, originally we had proposed River Rock to be in the ditch, but after talking to Brett Heiner, he said the best thing for him would be road base or deep exposed granite. If it, if it's too large, you can't maintain it. You can't get in there to weed it and mow it or whatever. So with that, staff has proposed that the text included as Exhibit B be added to Section 8-12-44U. U would be a new section called Alternative Street Design Standard for Rural Subdivisions. And the rural subdivisions are defined as any subdivision within the county where the lots are one acre or greater. Having a rural street standard, I found to be beneficial in other places that I have worked because it eliminates curb gutter sidewalks that will never be connected to other curb gutters and sidewalks. It widens the road, and it allows four-wheel pedestrian and bicycle traffic to be outside of the travel lanes. So with that, we're recommending approval. And if you have any questions, I can answer them now.
So the not alternative is putting curb and gutter in, in sidewalk?
The not alternative is the other standard, both standards are 60 feet wide, so we would not be losing any right-of-way. They would be dedicated to the county. And in rural areas, this probably would be easier to maintain than the curb gutter sidewalks, because the entire street would be, would be clouded in the winter.
Is there an issue of the opposite, where you would have sidewalks that would then need to be connected?
With this, you're still getting the pavement width. It just won't be sidewalk. So.
Well, I was saying, and with sidewalks coming up to this, how does it connect?
So there, so there are subdivisions that have curb gutter sidewalk in the county that probably will never have connections. So this would eliminate that.
Josh, did I, did I hear you say they were dedicating it to the county?
Yeah, this is for a public street standard.
Right. But I'm saying on someone's driveway, we're not saying.
Well, the driveway won't be dedicated, but over the culvert, they will have to connect across the culvert and pave that.
I think Devin was trying to get, if you have a street that has the curb gutter and sidewalk, and it comes up to this, how will it transition to the wider street?
Well, the current curb gutter sidewalk ends, and there's no guarantee it will ever connect with additional curb gutter sidewalk. This just provides a wider area, which, if I remember correctly, gets pretty close to where the sidewalks end anyway. So you'll have pavement. So it'll go from, it'll go from existing sidewalk onto.
Asphalt.
Asphalt.
The wider road.
Yeah.
Could you add that in as the text amendment, or into the text amendment, that it has, if there is an existing sidewalk adjacent to it, that it'd have to connect?
Yeah, I can add that.
And is it like a slope, or is it just bam, connect?
There's, no, there's specific design standards, handicap standards for sidewalks, and if there is an end, there has to be, they don't have to connect it with a ramp if it's going to connect in the future to a sidewalk, but if it's not, then. But if it's not, then there has to be a ramp installed. That's my understanding.
All right, so this would apply to any subdivision as developing one acre lots or larger?
In the general.
So if someone came in, was developing only 10 acres, they'd have to have a bicycle lane?
If they're only developing 10 acres, and they can get 10 lots, and they have to put in a street so each lot has frontage, then yeah, they would.
Or could they, they don't have to take this?
No, they don't.
But the alternative is bringing in curb and gutter. That's going to be way more expensive.
It'll be more expensive, and it's more visible, especially when it doesn't connect to other curb gutters and sidewalks.
Okay, so they have an option?
We have a lot of those sidewalks to nowhere.
Isn't there a book about that, where the sidewalk ends?
Did you want to make...
That'd be the one recommendation, or one condition or whatever, is just if there's already... I mean, it seems like if we had to make them, or require that they at least try or connect things is beneficial or worthwhile.
I think that's a great suggestion. And we can add that in as item F.
What did Brett say about the five inches thicker on the outer edges? Did he thought that would be beneficial, that would help, or...
Yeah, he thought that was beneficial. Mark Miller also commented that he thought that was a great solution. The problem with just having asphalt the same width all the way across is when there's vehicles that either park over there, they drive over it, it crumbles and breaks. But in Arizona, there's a standard there that requires the thickened edge, and it cuts down on that.
So was the applicant Brett, or the applicant was somebody else?
No, the applicant was a private citizen that wanted that option for their subdivision. But as we know, I can't make changes just for a single subdivision. It has to apply to the entire county in general. I believe this proposal is actually a good idea, which is why staff is recommending approval.
Have they seen this?
Oh, yeah. We worked with the applicant specifically. It was their engineer that drew the standard.
Josh, I'm also here.
Yeah, yeah. I know, I was gonna say.
Yeah, if you guys have any specific questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
Sorry. So this would be for new subdivisions, but not necessarily updating old roads like Morgan Valley Drive, Lost Creek?
Well, Morgan Valley Drive is not a local street. This would be for the interior local roads within a subdivision.
Okay.
So unless the subdivision is along Morgan Valley Drive, and their infrastructure is substandard, in which case they probably have to bring it up to Morgan Valley Drive, which is a collector, it's completely different.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
We're going to have public hearing. So it'll be open to the public opinion.
Madam Chair, I move you go into public hearing.
I second it.
Do you have a motion, a second, to go into public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now...
James Ebert, Oregon County Economic Development.
Come up to the mic.
I was hoping we were things down. The only question I have is how are you going to transition in your stormwater out of your system when it is transitioning from the gutter culverts into the offset culverts that you're creating at the very edge of the road? Because there's about a five-foot distance, right? So if you're collecting water out of the storm, out of the gutters, but your collection point is at the very edge of the roadway?
The ditches are 12 feet wide.
Okay. Okay, that was, I just was wondering that. Thank you.
Yeah, it should tie in this one.
Well, that's actually a good question. Because if we have the curb and gutter here, and then this thing that ramps down, where's all the water going from the curb and gutter corner? Around it?
An engineering thing, but I'm just wondering how you connect those two.
So when it needs...
We could...
I'll wait till you close the public.
Any more?
And then I would just also add, so I've seen a lot of this from some time I spent doing some of this, where if you're trying to create a rural community feel, and so you make one acre lots or larger lots, and then you require the curb and gutter, you'll lose that rural feel of that road upsetting up to curb and gutter than sidewalk. And a lot of folks really like that feel of that road as it just kind of goes off and then into either fields or, you know, into, you know, other types of landscaping. And so from a rural county perspective, feel for larger lots, it is a better, it meets more of that rural feel. So I've seen a lot of people request this in other counties.
Any more comments? Any motion to go out?
So moved.
Motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So to answer your question, anytime a new subdivision goes in adjacent to an existing subdivision in existing infrastructure, part of the subdivision's submittal requirements require grading and drainage. And those plans have to be designed to fit into adjacent properties. Because each property has to account for natural and historic flow rates of water, which includes on streets. And these streets, like most streets or any street, needs to be designed with at least a 2% grade, so it drains into the ditches. And those existing curb gutter spillways or whatever, they're going to, they're going to connect right into this. They'll have to be designed to do that.
Okay. Any more questions? Be ready for motion with the one addition?
I'll give it a try.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that, or I move we forward a positive recommendation to the County Commission to add, to add a section to the Morgan County Code, specifically Section 8-12-14U, alternative road, or rural street design to allow for alternative street design for public streets within subdivisions where lot sizes are greater, or are one acre or greater, based on the text listed in the exhibits of the staff report, based dated July 13, 2023, with the following, I guess, addition. Just to add a Section F that requires that they are connecting existing sidewalks with the bicycle lanes.
I'm sorry. I missed that.
Adding the...
You did a great job, too.
His eyes were glazed over.
Just how in the transition?
Transition, so to connecting the, any existing sidewalks to the bicycle lanes and having, or requiring there be a transition there.
I'll add that in before the county commission meeting, so it's...
And I don't know if it makes a difference, but it's 44, not 14.
Did I say 14?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Forty-four.
8-12-44.
Do you have a motion by member Miller, second? And a second by member Bass?
I was gonna do that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We're on to business and staff questions.
Just out of, out of my own curiosity, what has the feedback been about the Peterson Rezone?
I haven't received any phone calls. I haven't received any phone calls about it. I've talked to two people at the counter who wanted to know what it was about. I did my best to explain what was being proposed. Right now, it's just a rezone to RR5. We've been given no impation of how many lots they want to create, nor do they have to. Jeremy has received, how many phone calls? Three phone calls. Three phone calls.
I haven't received any of those.
Generally four or...
I knew you had a phone calls in support.
No, Eric's literally just asking.
Questions about it?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious.
Can I answer your question?
Any other questions for staff?
I have one, just to my own personal curiosity. What have you heard on Rivala, if anything? Is there anything going on there?
Say that again.
Rivala. Have you ever heard anything on that?
The subdivision that submitted, the applicant that submitted the request for the rural street standards was Rivala, now called Round Valley.
I was gonna say, is that the golf course? Yeah, that's golf course.
Yeah. So they're proposing to develop, I think it's 28 lots. That concept plan will come to you. They have to start over again because the timing ticked out for them. So they have an application, but I said, well, why don't, if you want to do a rural street standard, we have to change the text. I can't take you forward until it's approved. So you will see the concept plan probably after the county commission makes a decision, one way or the other. I'm not going to say if they'll approve it or not. It's not my call to make. But if they were to approve it, then I'll bring the concept plan as designed forward because that's, that's what they're proposing as a rural street standard.
Okay.
It's none of my business, and you maybe can't answer it. Are they going to kind of put the houses together and kind of cluster them, or are they putting them individual lots along the street? Feel free not to tell me if you don't count, but...
I think it's going to be a mixture. They're going to have some cul-de-sacs, and they're going to have houses along the street. They're going to, they've worked with another applicant for ranches around Valley, who you saw the concept plan, I think it was December. They, they're going through the preliminary, final plot at the same time for eight lots. So those two have worked, they're working out an agreement for a secondary access that'll take it out to, close to the freeway. And we're just waiting for their maintenance agreement to come in.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have any business for us?
No, not tonight.
Not tonight? Okay.
Are we still meeting Monday again?
It's Wednesday.
It's Wednesday. Uh huh. And we have your orders...
It is Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
No, it was going to be Thursday before the meeting.
I think we decided Wednesday.
The following Thursday, right before the planning commission.
Was it Thursday before? Okay.
So it was Thursday, the 27th, we were going to meet at 5:00. I thought it was one final time before it comes back for, with the changes before, because we continued it to the first meeting in August. And so we were going to meet next Wednesday.
Okay, I have that in my calendar. I was just thinking Thursday.
So it is next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday, and then the following Thursday as well.
Both at 5:00?
Uh huh. And that gives me a little bit more time to make the changes that the planning commission requested.
Okay. Anything else? And we don't have minutes, we didn't have minutes in our packet. And Mikel was out sick this week, so we'll show up in our next packet. So I guess that means, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?